The flag related to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. I will call me in order. We do have a quorum and I took your motion to approve the agenda and that's, I'll make a motion. Alright, I'll second that motion. All in favor, aye. Aye, aye. We have an agenda. Morning, Rich.
Morning. Not much, rock run is still going on. The Cold and Place Recycling on Dogwood started last week. They ran on oil Friday early, so they're, they're going to go home early. They're thinking maybe by Wednesday we'll be done with that. Cold and Place Recycling, it's got to set and dry out before we can start paving it again. See on that takes, sometimes it takes a couple of weeks, sometimes it takes a month and colder weather is coming, it might take a little longer, but.
Who, uh, Portland paving then?
Portland paving, yeah. So. Otherwise, we're still doing our regular maintenance as we're going, did some, trying to look at some concrete patch and we got some done on, on the south side there. And I have Lynn go around and look, I know between him and Colton, we're gonna look at some things. Grouse House is in Mitchell County right now, we do some pipelining and they also can mud jack pavement, so we might have some bridge approaches we might look at. I know there's a couple on Vine, we're looking at having jacked up a little bit, get a little sweeter ride over a few of that stuff, but. I know that the owner went down and looked last week at what was there, he had a little, a couple of concerns about whether he could get the approaches lifted or not, but. We'll get with him and evaluate and see what's happening. We'll see some of that coming through this summary yet.
Yeah, uh, we've also got an agreement for me and Jim. This is professional engineering services, secondary roads and conservation planning, facilities planning. But on the list, Enes, what do you think? I didn't see anything that ever looked good. Obviously rough drafts as far as what the officers and shops layout, but.
And I think when we have that meeting, we've been kind of looking through, I mean, being preliminary thing, we can look at some things with the the shops and things like that, whether we want to separate babe for something else, but as far as, I don't know, I mean, I think focus was maybe working on an office building first and then second priority would be the maintenance facility, but if we're doing it all at once, we can look at that too, but we need to sit down and have that meeting.
Yeah, I guess next Monday we're planning on a workshop after a meeting, so let's figure out what we need and what we don't need. Then we can hash it all out if we get, you know, if it can all go to bed together, we might get better pricing because you get a contract there to work on three different buildings, but that may help.
Full storage, you know, we can do a couple of different things with that. That's kind of in the back burner, we still have our lot there, we still have storage here, but.
And depending where the bids come in, it depends on, well, how much.
A lot of things we can look at, you know, if we bring all the salt shed over here and we've got a whole building in Kansas that theoretically could be empty for storage too, so. All that to be determined.
Right, yeah, step one.
Step one, get.
Do we want to get into, do we want to get into an agreement with B and K and start going over the list?
I'd say we do, yes, I make a motion, we get an agreement.
Okay. Alright, I'll second that motion. Is there any other discussion? Here none, all in favor, aye. Aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries. Alright, anything else, Rich?
That's all I've got, unless you got a good question.
Don't believe so.
Okay, well, you got my phone and my email.
Uh, drainage.
She's on vacation.
There's the two. She got work order, you see those, you know, some, yes. Then sparks that blow up down there and the other, the other one is a ditch cleaning. Yes, and that creek. Yes. Uh, so Steve Bart's is first, um, sounds like he's got a pop line enough to fix it.
Sounded like.
Right, yep, that's the way I read it. Sounds their motion to approve work order for EB twenty-two, I'll make that a motion, okay, I'll second it. Any other questions? All in favor, aye. Aye, aye, opposed? There is. Okay, and then, uh, DB twenty-three is over just west of the ethanol plant. Um, going out there's Colton looked at it on Thursday. And, yeah, he lost like thirty-three acres. What happened was so much water came through that it came out of the banks. And he thinks, see, doesn't know that needs to be cleaned out further south because that's holding water up, but he's also, and it's hard to tell with all the weeds and fall grass and corn along that, that it's the ditch is actually wider in other places than it is through there.
Is that why it's bottlenecking right in that area?
That's what we're kind of trying to figure out. Cause he said when that was coming through, he had some pictures of just after, after like the next morning, but there's still a bunch of water standing, but it did come out. But then it was still fairly full, but on upstream and downstream, there's still plenty of room in the ditch. So it's like it's bottled, that can do that here and then. And some of the intakes, one of the intakes, three of the intakes we saw. One was underwater, one was on the other side of the creek was half full water and the other one was just above water, so. I don't know, I'm thinking that seeing if, uh.
And is that the main?
Yeah.
Should Bolton make a look at it because of the tragic?
Um, hey, we have probably have to look or, I don't know if Val said anything if it had been cleaned. I want to say, but I thought I saw it get cleaned. I thought she should have mentioned that, that this has been done before, or maybe that was Bart's has been done like three years ago. Didn't seem like that long ago, they were right along the.
They were running along.
Highway nine, I remember seeing them there, I just don't remember how long ago it was. But otherwise, I was gonna have, uh, see if Mark Tomlinson to fly that drone across there and get us some video of it to see if we can see the difference or see more because it's got the the, uh, let's say with all the weeds and corn, you can't, you can't tell us one, unless you get it from new and flow it or something, you know, but. Um, so I was thinking maybe we have Mark will through there and fly it. And then we could send that off to Bolton and make it, just have them look at it too. We get us some video of it would be ideal. So. But something needs to be done, um, I guess, so. I wish we could start with that, I mean, it's, yes, my thought, but it's.
My thought, yeah, we walked out thirty, thirty-three acres, I think he's got it figured out.
It just seems funny why it's catching right there. I don't know if it's, and a lot of times that's weird, you know, if you get the right curve of the river, that's where the set of it wants to be and maybe just that stretch needs to be cleaned out, be cleaned out on a more frequent basis because it comes in, so it's in. But it's just hard to see all that, so. Yeah, I could do that. Uh, you know, I'll make a motion to approve that work order down on DB twenty-three.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, aye. Aye, aye, opposed? Over there.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Did, uh, should Val bring out the one I talked about last week on state line?
Minnesota water.
Yeah, Minnesota water coming in, crosses the road on state line and then the ditch runs, I think it's west of Raven.
Can't remember what.
And, uh, the water, the ditch is on the south side, it's on, it's part of Deer Creek. The ditch runs on the south side and then turns and goes underneath the crossing and there's a couple culverts there that obviously in, in heavy rains, it backs water up, but he was saying it backs water up, then it backs water up underneath the road culvert and then floods his property on the other side, but I didn't know if.
This road culvert or not?
No, it's not, but it's, it's the crossing culverts that they think is the bottleneck and it just ends up pushing water back because they've got water coming from Minnesota through the road culvert too, but if they're not part of the district and I don't know, you know, they're not part of the drainage district, so I don't know really.
We had a conversation on that, what, a year ago, year ago, year and a half ago, about another situation where, you know, that Deer Creek stopped at the state line, somehow there's pipes that got put in that are bringing stuff through, but they're not paying for none of it.
Well, right, I mean, we have a crossroad culvert that just drains into there, but, I mean, a crossroad culvert will anyway, but I didn't know if she had talked to you guys about more of it or what, all I had, I had got the phone call and I followed up saying, hey, look, this is, you know, this is gonna have to go to the trustees, it's not gonna be my decision, it's all part of the drainage district, they have culverts or undersized, I don't, I don't know if they're undersized or not, or maybe they're, maybe they're partially collapsed, I don't know, but.
Is that five-ten and Zenia?
Nope, nope, it's.
That was a Colton, he got a call on one of, it's like five hundred-tenth and Zenia.
Oh, it's worth, I guess the ditches up here. You remember Jackie, if I.
Mine all the way up at the top, it's Raven, yeah, it's west of Raven.
Yes.
That's the same one we talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Minnesota's water was coming down and it was stopping there and. The ditch is, that ditch runs parallel.
Going down the Deer Creek watershed.
They're not paying anything.
Right, that's, that was a question, that was probably ran into a year, year and a half.
I was kind of wondering why they didn't run the ditch in the north side, it was taking all the water from Minnesota anyway, why the ditch didn't run the north side and then come into Iowa, but that's
See, I don't know.
When that was designed, I wasn't around for that, I didn't make those decisions.
Yeah, and when that was all done, who knows, the agreements.
Right.
You know, those.
And it was Deer Creek and it was Iowa's watershed.
Right.
As we talked about it and then, um, I told Val that another resource might be going down the hill too. Because they would have been more involved when it was actually, I know they're out of it, but they were.
You know, the issue happens when it floods, well, when it floods, nothing's big enough to take all the water.
Right, right.
We're not gonna, at least on the roadway side, we're not gonna design everything for the hundred-year flood because we can't afford to.
Yeah, exactly. I gotta go east when I leave here and I saw something by there and I know it's like, so I was a Colton and he said there, you gotta call him like five-ten and Zenia. Was a problem up there too, so, you know, I asked him about that, but.
I can run to the lookout.
So it's a going that way anyways.
She'll probably have more info next week.
True. Okay, that it for range? Alright, Julie and Anita, we can miss Winifred update. Hi there.
Hi there, good morning, everyone. Uh, thank you for letting us be on your agenda today, so we'll try to make this very brief and straightforward, our object, and I'll do an introduction in a second. Our objective today is to just give you an awareness, kind of an update on where we're at with Waking Miss Winifred Hotel, Winifred Reconstruction, so. With me today is Anita, Sunny Coniston, and Anita is a Northwood native, I don't know if, uh, if you recognize, there's probably some in the room that recognize her. Um, my name is Julie Berry, as I mentioned, and my connection to Northwood is that I'm married to Dean Davidson, and that might just crater the conversation right now. No, I'm kidding. Judy knows Dean, so, uh, Dean and Anita are actually classmates from nineteen seventy-six here in Northwood, so my involvement with the project is the fact that I am married to Dean and I got involved with the project about three years ago, so. Because we are, uh, so in the last, uh, year and a half, I've worked closely with Anita and Dean, Dean and Anita bring um, CFO, financial expertise to the, the process, and as probably many of you know for being Northwood residents is that um, Hotel Winifred has spent the last seven, eight years doing building stabilization, which they've achieved a lot thanks to the support of the community, the WCDA, a lot of private donors, et cetera, so we're at a point now where we actually have been working with Burgland and Cram, an architectural firm in Mason City, and we have floor plans and our next phase is to move into stage of getting blueprints, requesting blueprints. And the, the reason I wanted to come and present to the board of supervisors and all of you, I apologize that there was gonna be a, or everybody in the room, which is just great, I didn't bring enough PowerPoint.
Would you like your PowerPoint to be up there?
Um, not, not, not at this stage, I mean, I guess I, this is probably more of a handout for kind of an information as far as our phases. But where we're at today is that, uh, in the next month and a half, the board of, of Hotel Winifred will be presenting to the city of Northwood, to the WCDA, the banks and kind of a collective, uh, presentation as far as here's where we're at and here's the funding, here's the funding package that we're looking to partner with the city on, with the, uh, WCDA, et cetera, so we have a business plan, we have financials, we have projections as far as the hotel, and for those of you that may not know what we're looking to do is that we're looking to renovate the hotel and make it into a nine-room boutique hotel that would have, uh, the, you know, historic integrity of the building as far as that experience, but also offer modern amenities as far as the you know, having a, an experiential stay, not quite like the Park Inn, which has the Frank Lloyd Wright moniker to it, but that it would be, um, you know, have that grandeur of the old hotel, but then have, you know, linens and, and, you know, bedding, that's, that's, that's modern day, et cetera. And, you know, we, we've done lots of work as far as, you know, why would this work, how would it work, why would this be of importance, and we are when we step back and take a look at what's been happening in Northwood in the last couple of years, as far as lots of things happening on Main Street, when you think about the new, the new entrepreneurs that have come to town and have opened Worth Brewing, Carpenter Coffee, there's a bridal shop, the Event Center, and let me stop there for a second. This hotel will be, uh, targeted to, uh, you know, travelers, to people that are coming to the corridor of Clear Lake, Mason City, Northwood, Albert Lee, there's a lot happening in terms of this being a destination with what's happening in, in those areas as far as what these other cities are often offering. When you, when you take the event center, just as of an example, the fact that there's weddings and graduations, families coming into town, wouldn't it be great if we had a wedding party where we, we would be working closely with Tana Morris and the Toon team as far as if you book something at the event center, here's in-town accommodations, and so these, these families come and stay, and that eco-center of people just staying in town and visiting the group of visiting the Carpenter Coffee, et cetera. So that's kind of our, our, um, our, uh, you know, economic, we've spent a lot of time on doing statistics and research and Anita's been very involved with that with Dean as far as putting together the business plan, so we wanted to today for the benefit of the fact that you are, the board of supervisors is involved in economic development as a courtesy to let you know where we're at in the journey. So we'll be back up here in Northwood, you know, in the next month or two, putting, putting that presentation together. So with that said, I just wanted to kind of open it up in case there's questions from the board of supervisors about that, have you probably heard things about it, you know, that there's been work done the last year with the, the renovation, the, um, stabilization of the building, but really, this is just a unawareness for the board of supervisors and each of you that are part of the Northwood community, we're excited about it, I mean, we, it's, it's, we would love to see this, make this the dream come true, and I think, when I think about what's happened in Northwood, and I've been coming to Northwood for thirty years, I've been with Dean for thirty years, and it's just like, it's just this transformation of what's happening downtown. And I applaud those individuals that have had that vision and that dream, made it come true, like the event center. That was a lumberyard, as I understand, but Dean even worked there, so, um. And, and I did, I do have PowerPoints and I'm happy to leave as many as I, if, if some of you want to, this, this is really more of a, um, kind of a, the background, the evolution of the Hotel Winifred, and then where we're at with the different phases.
I emailed it to you, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and then just basically, we're at the point of, uh, there's been lots of there's lots of talk about it, there's, it's been a long time in the making, I give the previous, uh, leadership of the board a lot of credit for the passion of the building stabilization and, and working diligently to and, and the other part about the, this building that I'm excited about, and here I am an outsider, you know, I didn't grow up here, it's a beautiful building, and wouldn't it be wonderful to have it be preserved, to have something made of it, just instead of it being, you know, deteriorate and potentially being bulldozed down or turned into apartments, although I know that housing would be helpful, but to keep it, keep its grandeur as a hotel, so, I need anything to add to that?
You've got the Royal Motel on the south side of town, which is not exactly a job for anybody coming into town. Um, and like she said, Dean and I run the numbers number of times, I'm, I'm a, um, CPA as well. And, uh, I, I live out in Indiana, but I come back here frequently, drive the eight hours because I've been passionate about what's going on. Um, Dean and I run the numbers numerous times, depending on the funding, where we get it, how it pulls together, it cash flows, it really does, it makes money and it's, and our goal is actually to help possibly put that money back into the community, economic development, other things, like, you know, whatever we can do, and I'm not doing this because I'm getting paid, I'm doing it because of the love of my community and growing up here and, um, bringing my skill set to the table so that I can help out wherever I can. So, we've, it's gonna be cool, and we've also heard that, casino, we talked to Scott Smith and he said there is every week or almost every day, and certainly on weekends, a fifty-room shortage. So there's a really good chance they're gonna just send people our way into town, and a lot of people that are coming through probably look for a more unique hometown experience. And so these nine boutique rooms will be kind of very cool for them to stay at. Um, and I think they'll bring a nice dollar value on a, on a nightly rent. So, I, I just feel really good about it, um, the drives that we have are gorgeous, they are done by high-quality architects. Um, and it's not gonna be small rooms, they're gonna be nice-sized, comfortable rooms. Um, it'll just kind of get that hometown experience with people just passing through looking for something different, as well as people who are coming back to visit for family uh, events, Christmas, holidays, who knows what they're, you know, everything for, you know, so, I, I I just want you guys to know that we are working very hard and you hope that you guys will at least, um, appreciate what's going on and, and support us.
Yeah, no, I know, it's, I'm not from Northwood, but I know it's been a a work in progress, which is good, um. And, yeah, the, as far as we see on the development side of what we're involved in with it, uh, hotels are shortage around here on weekends. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you're not gonna get one unless you're booking six, eight months of the plan, it's fine. Um, so, and we think that's a lot, there's a lot of wedding venues in this county and there's only so many places to stay when it comes to that, so. I do truly believe that, yeah, another hotel would have a great occupancy rate. Um, and, and it's especially, like I say, if, if one of the venues is right here in town, you may see ninety percent of that business just staying right here because it's two blocks down the road, right? Uh, versus having to get shoveled out to like casino or somewhere else, you know, yourself. And it sounds like they're full anyways.
Right, and I, and I ran the numbers with a sixty-five percent occupancy, not even a hundred percent, and a cash flow.
Good.
So I, I think it's not going to fail. I think it's gonna be a good uplift to the community, you know, get people to stay here and spend some money too.
Right, that's what we're excited about, is that that circle of money stays in town, it's not that, and, and maybe some of the guests are from, from the casino because Dean and Anita went out and met with Scott, yeah, about a year, year and three months ago, and, and he said, oh, you know, keep us posted, we're excited, of course, the WC, you know, the casino is already part of the WCDA, so, um, and in fact, we, and we were going to try to go back out and meet with Scott this week, but it, it didn't work out, so. Uh, you know, kind of to dovetail onto what Anita just said, the, you know, we have done our research, this isn't just kind of like, we, it's a great idea, we want everybody just to like it, we have done our marketing research as far as, you know, availability of rooms. Our target market would be, as we already mentioned, would be, um, the, the events that are happening at the event center, I've met with Tana Morris, who is now the president of Toon, I'm sure many of you know. And it's my intention for us to have a close collaboration with Toon as far as that, that, you know, relationship back and forth. I've met with the entrepreneurs in town, I've met with, you know, Carpenter Coffee, with Laura, who's just, or is it Lauren, who's just opening up the, you know, the boutique next to the brewery, Peter. The point is, is that we're, we're getting the word out, we're wanting to just, you know, with a lot of work that has gone on behind the scenes, but this is, we're getting ready to make this happen, and we already have a partnership with Burgland and Cram, the architectural firm in Mason City, they're prepared for doing blueprints, we have a couple of contractors identifying them being one, they're, they would offer to be a construction firm. And in this PowerPoint, which I'm happy to leave copies for any, you know, as many as I have, um, I've got more than three, but um, is that the, kind of the phase would be is we'd go for the funding ask and, and, you know, would love to be approved this fall, and then we would hire our construction manager, and then our target would be to, and all, in all things being perfect, we would build in twenty-twenty-five. Ideally, potentially open in late twenty-twenty-five, but for sure twenty-twenty-six, because the entire, the timeline matters, and we have to be realistic about things happen, delays happen, cost of materials, acquisition of materials, et cetera, but we've been doing all of that background you know, considerations, you know, trying to building a timeline as far as what we would need to do, but now.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
Okay, so when you guys have this and you get it all made and it's ready to go and you talk about cash flow, who is making this money, where, what is the, I mean, where's the money going to, who's gonna run it and keep it up, but it needs a new air conditioning units, burners, new windows, I mean, who does all that?
Well, that's a great question, so we, we are currently a five-oh-one-C-three, as you know, Hotel Waking Miss Winifred, which is a five-oh-one-C-three, and it runs up, runs under the umbrella of the Worth County Historical Society. So in the operational part of it, we've, we've looked at a couple of different possibilities and we, our, our primary operation, Anita, I'm gonna partner with you on this too, is that we would remain the five-oh-one-C-three, we would find a, a hotel manager, and the other part about this is that we would bring employment, you know, there'd be a hotel manager and then of course your staff are servicing the rooms, et cetera, but that money stays in the, it stays as part of the five-oh-one-C-three, so that money would come back into Northwood, it would be that circle.
So it's not always be a nonprofit.
It's not a, correct, correct.
So I guess just for me, because I'm a taxpaying citizen, um, what are you asking for from the supervisors and from the city and everything, what, what are you asking for, for money? Like, when you say you're, you have, you have an ask, what is your ask?
Those, those final numbers are still, yeah, we, we've, Anita and Dean have, we kind of have a and I didn't bring all that with me.
You have any idea, I mean, what you're asking?
So what we need is the funding to complete the renovation.
Yeah, and how much are you talking?
That's, that's around two and a half million dollars.
Oh, my gosh, that's.
It's, it's unbelievable what it costs with lumber and construction cost to stay, it's, everything's gone up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Who else do you think you're funding from besides taxpayers, like where are you also writing to your funding, where else do you?
State of Iowa.
We're working with the state of Iowa and.
Have you received funding from them yet?
Not, no, but we, the, the grant applications are staggered, so that, for example, there's a grant that we are looking to commence in, uh, well, pursue the application process in September.
Okay.
So the state of Iowa has lots of, uh, underneath the economic development authority, which we have met with Jim Thompson and Jim Engel, the two, Jim Engel. So we're, we're looking to have our package to be a combination of, um, city of Northwood, which we've met with Amber and Doug several times.
And they're willing to give, like, it's.
Yeah, and they haven't identified dollars, because we, when we present in, probably in September is, and that's when those numbers will be on paper for them, so generally as Anita said, the two-point-five million, so there would be, the city of Northwood is, is, has endorsed the project, the project, so in terms of their dollars, it would be they would be working in a partnership with the WCDA, which has a, a grant fund that goes beyond their normal cycle.
Right.
And then we would, we've talked with both of the banks in town as far as just making them aware and having the same conversation, don't know exactly what our ask would be from them, so there's potentially a loan layer to this, and then there's the grants, as I said, from the, um, state of Iowa, and then, uh, private donations. So the, the, the package is probably similar to, similar to what some of the other major endeavors have been as far as just, it's a combination of.
I think the WCDA funded most all of the timbers, and that was two million or something like that when they built it.
They did that multiple in phases, I believe.
Yeah, and we would do it in phases as well too, I mean, this isn't like we're gonna ask for a check for two-point-five and, 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 you know, to the credit of the WCDA and the city of, of Northwood and, and many of you in this room, you want to understand what that is, and so that, that's the benefit that we've had of Dean and Dean who is a retired bank executive and Anita with her financial CFO, um, CPA credentials, it's like, here's, here's the fact, you know, what, people want to know with the numbers and the facts, and so we will have that. Um, and, and again, it's about, you know, that, that's a lot of money to, to, that's a lot of money, period. Our vision is that it will, and it will pay dividend return in terms of this being of an asset for Northwood, it's two things, it's the economic development contribution and it's the contribution of preserving a beautiful building that has lots of history here, and it's, you know, just slightly off the Main Street, uh, but it would, it would connect into so much that's happening, and again, the other work that we've done is that we are meeting with the city of Clear Lake, we're meeting with the city of Mason City, in fact, our board, I, we, we recruited an individual, Brett Backley, probably many of you know Brett, he works in Mason City, he's very involved with their chamber and their tourism part of Mason City, so that was purposeful, I've got Steve Hanson on the board and we all know Steve is uh, launched, you know, Art Farm Iowa and, and is about to launch the Emery, Emery Building downtown. The point there is that we are making connections with the small, other small cities, shouldn't say small, the other cities. I lived in Minneapolis for twenty-five years, so, so that's, and that's my, that's my, um, in relatively, as far as big and small. The point being is that, you know, we are networking out to say this asset is available to many of you, not just, it's about, our marketing will go beyond just Northwood.
But I do know there's tons of funding out there, I think the state's still pushing to try to keep these downtowns alive.
They are.
Um, it's a lot of matching grants, but, you know, three-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand. It's, it's a good chunk to go after, and if you get something that can match that, there's six-hundred thousand, so, yeah, I would say it's go for those state, that, the state funding, state grants, because it's very useful and.
Jasper's Foundation, have you looked into that one?
Yeah, we, we, it's honorable to pursue, yes.
They are all about this area right here.
I know, yeah, I have talked with Pat Goddard, I intend to, I intend to, to talk, call her again, we just need to be a little further down the road and it's taken us a year, Anita, Dean and I working on, okay, we have to put the, we have to put the facts together in terms of what's, what's the funding ask, I mean, the. Okay, we have to put the, we have to put the facts together in terms of what's, what's the funding ask. I mean, you know, and building the business case. You know, what, how, how, what will this, what, what will this, how can you generate revenue? What's it going to cost? And so a lot of work in terms of getting market data on hotel occupancy in the area. What's the average? What's the average pricing? And thanks to Burglin and Cram, who's a top rate firm. They've helped us with that as well too.
And Burglin Cram did the Park Hotel in Mason City. So they're familiar with this, um, not a profit, just a restoration project. The other thing we can say, I think, is that we've gotten some local funding for hiring a grant writer. So we're not specialists in that, but we're going to fire, we've got somebody hired and we've been communicating with them already. And they're engaged and already doing research for us to help us get some of the money that you're talking about from the state.
That's good.
Yeah.
We're to your asset.
It is. Yeah, we, I mean, I, and I, I have been doing the grant writing up this point in time and I, and, and we've been, we've been very blessed in that. The Swinewood Foundation has invested in us, the Lenny Kenstrom Foundation, um, the. You asked about Jasper's, Jansen Family Foundation has, has been, has invested in us and that has given us the soft money to. Hire Burglin and Cram, to hire this grant writer to, because we're serious. This isn't just somebody's hope and dream about let's have a hotel. This is, you know, we, we're in, we're in it for the, the, the real deal. So. Um, and I would love, I would love to see a hotel for Northwood. I mean, just. Any other, any other questions or?
Anita, you got any more?
Nope, I've been kind of tracking it. As it's, when it started. Been tracking the W C D A and the grants there.
Yeah.
And keeping an eye, well, basically most of the information I get is out of the paper. I don't know, he tried, he does a very good job of telling us, keeping us up to date and what's going on there and what's happening. So.
Yeah, well, the W C D A has been very gracious and supportive of the building journey and we're, we're so grateful. And, and all that money has been used to, and the building is very, and if any of you would ever want to tour. To see what is, what, where it's at, at this point in time, we'd be happy to coordinate that. Mary Ryerson Law is still very involved. Mary stepped off of the board. Because she had met her eight-year term limit. That's the only reason that she's not sitting in this chair. Is that, so she stepped out for a year, but she'll be back in in April. And so very, so Jane and Godgorn, Mary's still very involved. Our board consists of myself, Steve Hanson, which we're super excited about because Steve is making things happen in Northwood. Brett Backley, Jean Stole, I just recruited Steve, uh, Jean to come back on the board. Everybody knows who Jean is. She's out at the. Welcome Center and just a, a great resource of ideas. And then we have, um. Uh, the name is on the tip of my tongue, that's embarrassing, um, Teresa Cooper. So we're, we're working hard and I've got Anita and Dean helping us too. So.
I'm not on the board. Dean and I are just consulting, you know, I need support and information and guidance and things like that. Not that I've ever built a hotel, but.
The numbers at least. Yeah, I'm a retired H R person. So if you need a handbook done or something, I'm your gal, but this is, this is new to me too. So. Um, any other questions that we can field for the group while we're here?
You covered it well and glad to see it's going to continue moving forward. I know it's, it's been a process, but everything is, so. Um, hopefully it all works out and hopefully in a year, year and a half, we see the thing open.
Absolutely. So we just, like I said, we just wanted you to, since you're part of the economic drivers of the city, was, as a. Out of respect, it's like, it's time to come and talk to the order of supervisors.
Outside the building looks beautiful.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, I've done a lot of stabilization, um, as far as the frame and the structure. And now they're kind of like building that infrastructure that you don't see.
Right.
It just takes some money.
We, we just had three D renderings done. Burglin and Cram had them done. We had a fundraiser just this past Saturday. That's why Anita and I are both in town and Dean. And, uh, anyway, and then we have four plans. I will, I will email them to you, Jackie. So you, you, what, what? Cause it's, it's, it's great to see the visual too.
Yeah.
You know, the, the four plans and then the, the three D renderings as far as what the rooms will look like. So, yeah.
That'd be, that'd be very appreciated.
Okay, I will make a note to do that.
Thanks for taking.
Yes, thank you. I know you guys have.
Thanks for. Thanks for volunteering. Not many people volunteer, so thanks for that.
Yes, yeah, awesome. Thank you, everybody. Have a great rest of Monday and a great week.
You too.
Judy, good to see you.
Good to see you. Yeah, we'll try to.
Yes. No, Mike, I said hi.
Did I leave, did I pack those up? Did I leave some of them? I did. I'll leave some of these so that in case people want.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. You can leave the door open.
Okay.
There's just an echo of it.
Oh, is there now?
It, it's probably okay now.
Uh, if you need to shut it again, go ahead. You have payroll claims. Do you like the motion to approve payroll claims?
I'll make a motion to approve payroll claim.
Okay, I'll second it. All favor I. Close.
And I have one interim claim that I needed to run through. I'm still working on getting us switched over to Lincoln, which ended up.
Oh.
With us figuring out that we're out of compliance with our plan and getting that back on track. Uh, we needed to engage with the IRS and of course, they wanted three thousand dollars right then and there. On the, on the website. So, so I, um, did that through Jake and our. Electronically, so I'm hoping that you guys are okay with that.
She didn't wish for us to approve that?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Yeah, I'll send it to them for the prove that. Claim to the IRS. Uh, any other discussion? Here now, all favor I. I propose. Rewards. Sheriff's motion, motion to approve reports. I'm going to motion to approve that. I'll second it. All favor I. I, I, both.
No payroll, no liquor.
All right, fireworks permit.
Two of them. An annual one and then. Drash sends that one every year. Yeah, he's pretty good about it.
Fireworks permit for Bickhouse Farm, seven eighty-four, three fifty-fifth, and then also one for Ruggnus. Forty-eight eighty-three Dogwoods. Are motion to approve both fireworks permits? I'll make a motion to approve both of them. Okay. I'll second it. Any discussion? Here now, all favor I. I, I suppose. Yeah. Sheriff's bank, discussion on the residency of the deputies.
Um, one of the thing that is happening throughout the state is, is kind of archaic that, uh. Deputies are required to live within the confines of the county when they're hired. We're seeing probably about fifty percent. Changeover counties allowing that to live in other ones, which is helping with the recruiting process, which we're having very difficult time. Recruiting new deputies. So I've talked to Jesse Luther, who is the prime candidate for my position after I leave. And, and with the civil service board, one of the things we came up with was opening up our residency. Um, our suggestion would be a fifteen mile radius from the border. Um, from the county line out, not going into Minnesota, because that opens all kinds of different implications down at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. So it'd be in Iowa with, uh. Being able to take home their squad car. And the reason we thought that is instead of having, we need these guys instead of having someone that lives. Right by Carpenter or right down by Plymouth, having to drive all the way to Northwood to get their squad to respond to. Uh, seen and fertile, they can respond right from where they're at if we need them. So that's kind of what we're thinking. Um, definitely it's to help us. Retain employees and to, uh, and to get ones, uh, that we can fill the positions with adequately.
Let's see, you checked with insurance?
Jackie checked with insurance borders and they have no problem with it.
Problem without, wouldn't be any different there transporting or.
Yep.
Out of county anyways, right? For work purposes. See any problems with it?
No, I, it's, it's something that we need to do. We need to, it, it's coming with the times. We're going to have to reach out to county. In order to get candidates. I agree.
I agree. Everybody's doing it too. Um, you know, it's, and they're still struggling, but it's, it's helped, I think, a lot of communities around that it's been a, uh. Living.
We have five applicants right now that are in, and one of them is one of our reserves who's been with us for about six years. Very good candidate, um, who lives three miles outside of the county. So I mean, that would be the type we'd want to target. And, you know, um, I go back to losing Brian Olson over to Forest City. One of the things, reason why he moved was. His wife and daycare wasn't for city. So when that job, we can maybe retain someone like that to keep them here instead of losing to them towns where they. More work is available and that.
Um, and this, by changing this. Now, I know this has been unquestioned probably before, but that does not change, that does not supersede Iowa code on the sheriff.
No.
Cause it's elected, they have to live.
They have to live in the county.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I'm trying to make sure that we.
Yep.
This is just strictly deputies or?
Elected officials are totally.
Yeah, right.
It kind of brings us in line with everybody else in the county because all the other departments, there's no residency requirement. The only one, like my dispatch jail, residency requirement for them, um, the deputies right now, I believe.
All right, well, Angus, would you like to make a motion to approve the residency for the deputies?
I would like to make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. There any else to discuss about it? Here now, all favor I. I, I oppose. All right, you make that a part of your handbook. And, uh, maybe that'll help retain and recruit some new deputies. So. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-one, final flat for the rest of that acre is just west of Northwood. I know Teresa's been working on it, Jolene. Everything kosher now?
Yep.
Right? Yeah, been a work in progress, but. Hopefully the next time this would ever come up, it's a little easier now, smoother process. So.
We got a checklist in place now.
Yeah, so. All right, so there are motion to approve, uh, twenty twenty-four dash four one for the final plat for the rest of that acres. I'll make that a motion. Yeah, I will second that motion. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Noberg, I, Stone, I, resolution adopted. Uh, building grounds. I did talk to Midwest and. They were thinking just another downspout. They want to bring a lift in to get up there and see. It would be easier to put a larger gutter in or a second downspout. And I said, well, if you're going to mess around, put, bring a lift up here, just exit. Said, because you're going to want to charge us for bringing a lift up to. Said, so why are we coming up twenty? Free material, I said, because he said a lot of times those roofs, you know, they, they tuck them underneath and it's real hard to pull it out without damaging other stuff. He goes, we could just do a second downspout. Bring them both down, turn them both out. So there's no tile out there. Like, she'll be downspout bike going all the way. So I said, and he said probably a neighborhood of fifteen hundred dollars. I said, just do it. It's, they don't need water, leak in their building, so. Hopefully that'll help with that corner of the building, so. So they may be coming up here at some point to take care of it.
I'll let you know if it doesn't.
Hopefully right on heavy.
I start to float.
Yeah. Hopefully right on the heavier range. Uh, anything else as far as, whoa, building grounds?
Be nice to him.
Yeah, we need him. All right, uh, top of Iowa water main, uh, nothing new on that right now. Uh, when we're back, go, Melissa?
I have a pretty open week this week, um, but I just got word that our website is due for an overhaul, so. I'll be working with Golden Shovel for the past, or for the next like six months, completing a, and a complete overhaul of the, the website. So super looking forward to that. And then I have, um. The, the gal that just spoke to this, those two ladies, they're coming to visit me later this afternoon.
Okay. Yeah, glad they'll keep you in the loop too then.
Sounds good.
Yeah, well, I will see you at three o'clock.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I forgot to get rid of the resident analysis, didn't I?
Yep, that's already proved so.
Done deal. I let Jake know, so they were moving forward.
Yep, I did too. I forgot to call him, so I did call him, um. Department heads.
Uh, my two pickups are in. Plan I'm going over and picking it up Wednesday. Rich, I should have one ready for you September-ish. Um, the only other thing, I will be gone the next two weeks. So if you do need something, Chief Deputy Luther will be in charge.
Fantastic.
I'll go. So we, uh, we will be having a new employee and new R N. We had four applicants after putting the ad out within. Two weeks, so we were very excited about that. We did interviews and we gave her an offer contingent. She's from, um, the Glenville area. So she's getting her Iowa license, but background check and all that was all good. So contingent on her getting her Iowa license. We will start her, um, full-time employee, young gal, very excited to have her on board, um. Which is very good for us because then as soon as we get her trained and ready to go, we'll be able to accept more, um, referrals. So, which is more revenue, which is more income. So that is very good for us. The opioid funding. Um, Jackie kind of brought that up to me later last week and we're going to get to together. She's going to give me the information, what I need. That we can move forward with that. Um, Lexi and I actually have some ideas of what to do with that funding with it being. A good amount of what we can really do to make a difference in Worth County with that funding. And so we're going to start to work on a plan, work on a project. Um, I have another gal, I know from Fertile that works on, um, grants. Through that, so I'm going to reach out to her, Jackie, um, and she's going to help me out a little bit too. On the other end of what we could do, what we can't do, et cetera, something to spend that money.
And there's four thousand dollars more on my desk.
More, awesome. So you'll get me that information on how we can spend it today. Perfect. Yeah, because that was something, again, I didn't have. So Jackie's got to get that to me though. But thank you for that. So everything's going really well over there. Real, really excited. Um, staff is doing really well, working hard together to make everything run smoothly. So.
Well, appreciate the extra effort and stuff time.
Yeah.
Kathy was here last week. We really thanked her because it's, it, it's not what we want to see happen, but we're glad, uh. Everybody's willing to pick up the pieces and, and keep moving forward.
Kathy did a stellar job for us for being a volunteer.
Yeah.
She really stepped forward when, you know, it's like she said, you guys are all working forty hours a week. So we did what we could, but she did more. There as a volunteer, getting us information on things we needed to make sure we were making the right decision for Worth County Public Health. And I really feel like we did make the right decision, keeping everything intact and moving forward and. Will be stronger.
Good, good deal. And I think next week we're going to discuss your, uh, new board member.
Yep.
Uh, we just want to make sure Marcus is back since he's been a part of this. Thought about doing it today, but it's like, let's wait till he's back.
Yeah.
He's been a part of it the entire time and, and his inputs, I guess, more critical than ours because he's involved in that one.
And then August nineteenth too, we have the meeting set up with, um, H R and. You guys and then we'll all be together, good board health and to kind of discussing, moving forward, I guess.
Sure.
Yeah, so excited about that too. So. Thanks.
Thank you, Shannon.
You bet.
Anybody else? Department head boys? Uh, Mark Tomlinson. Would you be willing to do some drone flying for us?
Yeah, just, uh, have Colton, Colton knows where that's at, correct?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a map and an email from Val, so I'll send that to you. And it's, it'll probably be a good part of a mile, but have you fly that and get as much good footage or video as you can.
Yeah, just, uh, maybe have Colton, give that to Colton and I can work with him. It'd be a good, he's, uh, one of the new pilots too. I can get him out there and get some, uh, stick time for him too on that. We could work together and.
Okay.
And he knows what he's looking for, you know, for the. What's filled in or what is, is in his white and stuff too and.
Yep, yep, so. All right, I'll have him reach out to them.
Yep, anytime this week probably would work good.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Mark.
You bet, no problem.
All right, Superbres Weekly. I didn't have any formal meetings. Look at that. I was going to fall back and look. Uh, sent in on an interview, um, for I T, it's about it. Was I, didn't have any. I did see, um. We've got a meeting tomorrow, it's a Zoom meeting, but the, uh, H H S, H H S map was changed. So we would, uh, we may stay together with the other counties, um, whether Care Connections is that group running it? Or somebody else is, but at least we have a better shot of. Sticking together instead of Care Connections splitting off, because if they did Care Connection. Sticking together instead of Care Connections splitting off, cause if they did, Care Connections would, would have just stayed west. They would not have come east, so now that it's, this has changed and actually went, comes to us and stops and actually drops south a little bit. Um, now Care Connections is really, I think, to try to get that region. Um, I don't know, it's R F P or an A S O, or, you know, on an acronym of some sort, should. Process to get going, so. I think, uh. Uh, it's a better opportunity or chance for Care Connections to stay involved, so, but I'll let you guys know more about that after we meet on Tuesday, so. Uh, anything else for next week or future agenda? Um. I'll look, Jackie, but there is Iowa Utilities, or Summit Farm, Summit, uh. Pipeline meetings.
I actually wrote that down.
That was September. It's in my email, I'm making a check. Wasn't it September twelfth or something? Six o'clock, yeah, in Manly, yeah, lace, lanterns and lanterns and lace. Okay, nothing else then, I think we've fulfilled our agenda. Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All favor I.
I.
Hi, meeting is adjourned.